Okay, and you all have been really patient and probably overwhelmed by all of that material that the staff has shared with you. As I said at the beginning, I mean, you can just see the excitement. I really can't tell you of another community that I've worked with where all of the different departments took such ownership of the, of a plan and a council's direction and a citizen community-driven direction as the folks have here on your staff. And so, you know, I think that was real evident in the presentations that you just heard and the enthusiasm that you heard from those. What I'd like to do now, though, appreciating the patience as you've been taking all of that in, is really spend the rest of the time tonight getting you to reflect on that and having some discussion among the council members about some of those accomplishments and about where that sort of puts us as we start our shift for tomorrow to thinking about the next year, about 2015. And so, if I can ask, Gina, why don't you go ahead and put all, what I'm going to ask you to do is I'm going to put these three questions up here on the, on the screen to help organize our discussion a little bit. I know that there, it would probably be easy to say, "Well, I like this," or "I compliment so-and-so." But what I'd like you to consider are these questions. The first one, what two or three, what small number of items best demonstrate the action that's going to create the kind of desired future Louisville that you want? You heard about a lot of different things and lots of positive stuff. Which ones best exemplify, best, you know, best really set out that character that say we're moving towards the future we want to have in this community? So that's one question. The second, what's the biggest opportunity to make progress in 2015? So what, out of the things that you heard, maybe there's something that you think is the biggest opportunity to build on from what we had, from what you heard about that happened in 2014? And then the third one, what issues might be in Louisville's future that isn't spoken to in Louisville 2025? Is there something else that we need to be paying attention to or thinking about? Are there some things that, that you didn't hear that you want to think about as we look ahead? So we want to make sure to keep that, anything else, question out for you so that you can be thinking and be adding to the discussion if there's something that's missing. Here's what I'm going to ask you to do, Gina, if you could just go on to the format. Spend a few minutes, I'm saying here five to 10, probably more, you know, something in that range, thinking about those questions and then, next.
I don't know how many there are.
Oh, okay. Write down, write down your answers. I think that there are notepads around here. So jot down your notes of your own answers to those questions. So think about it first for yourself. Write down some of your comments on those questions and maybe you want to address all three questions, maybe you just want to respond to one of them, that's fine. And then, next, Gina. Then we'll, we'll discuss those. We'll use those questions as the format for our discussion and what we're going to end up with, I hope, is the ideas from y'all on council about how we can build on these things. Some of those are likely to come up in our discussions over tomorrow and Saturday and so that will help us to make sure we get your, your ideas addressed there. But some of them may be items for the future. And we have a flip chart over here in the corner where the staff is keeping track of topics that need further workshops, need further discussion later on, so we may identify some of those. So does that make sense to everybody? Is that clear? We're going, I'm going to leave this right here for you. So if you might take, I've got eight o'clock right now, so if you might take five to 10 minutes and we'll see what you're comfortable with, to think about these questions yourselves and then write down your notes and then we'll talk about those amongst yourselves and see where we go from there. Can everybody see that? Okay. So let's start with that first question and I'll just open it up to anyone who'd like to kick us off. What were those couple of items that really set us on the right road to the, the future that you want to see?
Lila.
Lila, okay, because?
It's just since, I think it's, you know, one of those hidden jewels that we haven't really, you know, leveraged the way we could. Now we're finally getting to do that and I think it sends a strong message and image about Louisville to both the local public and beyond.
And that's a really big change. That's a big, big move there. So, yeah, others?
I'd like to, I'd like to see more of an incubator connection between the city of Louisville and the local colleges that we have in the area.
Uh huh, okay, okay. In terms of job training and entrepreneurial?
Job training, drop. Exactly. Exactly. You know, more of a connection with the type of businesses that they're going to school to learn about and having those companies locally that, you know, they're, can come at and get work in-house experience on the job side of the technical school.
Okay, so that, and that's really in a way a, a good thing for us to think about in the future as well. Let me make sure we note that one down. Yeah, other, other ideas?
2025 Plan itself.
2025 Plan itself, yeah, there you go.
Demonstrating action that's going to get rooted on that.
I think it also demonstrates listening to the public. And again, that's, that's one of those important and tangibles that I think has huge value. And not just talking about it. Yeah. Well, and it's not just coming out of City Hall to you. It's, you're, you're putting into City Hall. You're sending the message to City Hall.
And City Hall's doing something in response to this. That's a big difference. That's really important.
I, I got a, I kind of went with a theme. We talked about our green space folks and they were cleaning up the, the trails and that one, and they were interfacing with residents. And then we talked about the premier neighborhoods piece and how the police department was interfacing with residents. And then we have, you know, our new community services and that whole Nest program and how that's all decided to be interfacing with residents. I think that, that concept of city staff, city government interacting with residents, I think really sends a powerful message and counteracts a lot of garbage that we hear in the media about the government. You know, this is, this is, we're all a community, we're all pulled together. And I like that theme and I really think that's, that the city staff and the community are just one entity, I think really helps create that future.
That's a, that's a very important distinction too compared to a lot of other communities where people don't, don't look at it that way. And certainly the steps that, that the staff has put in place that you heard about make a big difference in doing that.
It's funny to see because my other two here were the creeks cleanup and I mean, whatever. And so kind of, kind of the same. And what started with the creek cleanup, wasn't just the creek cleanup, it was the people that were interacting and taking interest in it. And I was, you saw me look at you about the signs. I think the signs are hugely important to give, and more of them, please, anywhere we can to get that message out there that we have this Vision 2025 Plan. Get people that maybe didn't know about it to start to find what is it, where did it come from?
Yeah, I remember us having that discussion last year about the need for that, the importance of that.
Yeah, so, so kind of a double benefit of the creek cleanup was they, or triple benefit was getting it cleaned up, but it was the interaction of people and then it was the message that the sign sent.
And the message getting out. Okay, great, great.
And I think the most important point is the expansion of the green centerpiece.
Okay.
I think it's going to go a long way in the overall development of the 2025 Plan. I think that's one.
Getting out of touch, everybody.
Very important.
Rudy, what are your thoughts?
The expansion of the Green Deal and this may be a little, look eventually to take over the landfills for the green. And instead of 2,000 acres with Lila, we'll have less than 5,000 acres all the way up and down the corridor and make sure that they keep their liability when the, if they give it up.
Rudy, we do plan to bring waste management in as, with the stakeholders in our future discussions as a group.
Yeah, and you'll be interested to know that in the, the first couple of meetings that we've had with those partners that Donna mentioned, you know, when we start talking about, there's a lot of interest, of course, on Lila and the opportunity, but everybody is really excited about that larger green area as well and the opportunities for that. So, you know, I think, I think all the, all the staff that have been involved with that and those partners all are kind of thinking along the line that you just said. Mayor, what do you think?
To me, the, probably the most impacted thing that happened in 2014 that people noticed more than anything was I-35 getting started. And we're seeing that, I mean, more and more people see that, they're seeing that something is happening in some sort of, we've been talking about it for 10, 15 years. In 2014, it came to fruition and much better people know that something's happening. Another thing is Old Town, we're seeing some demolition of stuff in Old Town, we're seeing new projects come on board and stuff. They're starting to see the private sector do more work instead of just being a public sector taking charge.
On that deal, the Chopper Center is being redone, like the Windco, like the El Rancho on 35. And even the High Falls still was, was a few years before that, but if y'all ever go down there, it's full. And it looks good too.
Yeah, so you see those results, people, people notice the difference when they, the people who live in the neighborhoods knew those centers really, that really.
Windco might really open some people's eyes on what to do or what, I, I feel, it appears going to be something to, to look forward to.
I think the idea that's going to open are developers who maybe have been reticent to get involved with older properties where there's asbestos or it's a brown field or they're going to get into a longer timeline, they're sitting on, you know, interim financing, they don't want to spend on them, they have to. It's going to get more involved, it's got regulatory issues and yet Windco took that on and I think they're going to make something of it. Maybe it'll send out a message to other developers that, you know, with some of these other older properties, there may be an opportunity there that you haven't been willing to consider because you were out looking for all the greenfields.
I hope that's one thing we learn tomorrow when we tour the West Seventh Street development because so much of what they had to deal with was just that. And so the developers will be here along with the Fort Worth City staff so we can hope to learn some things from that example.
Yeah, they've had a lot of exciting successes on that and ties in really well, I think, with the things that you all are, are in the process of doing.
Well, I'm thankful Windco came to town because of what they tackled.
Yeah, well, and it is, you're, you're exactly right that for many developers, they think it's much easier and quicker to go off to some greenfield, I'll just do that and not worry about it. But once you establish that track record that Louisville is a community that wants to see that happen, that will work with you, that kind of partnership, that kind of, you know, invest, assistance and investment that you're doing, you know, as people see that, that attitude changes about this community. So, you know, that's certainly, and that's another thing that's different. There are plenty of cities in this region where that's not true. Are there other things that, that really highlight, really exciting ways that this, that we're moving towards the future you want to see? There's been a lot of synergy and commonality among the, the comments that I've heard from these people. Others? Okay, so let's, let's then think about biggest opportunity to make progress in 2015.
Branding. Branding, branding, I'm a broke director.
Branding, 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 branding.
Branding, because we don't, we have so many assets, we have so many great things and so many great things in motion and we just haven't really gotten that message communicated very well. And part of it too is that, and I've given you this description, I've given it to Donna and I'll say it again because I've used it for several years. I think that in the past and even up in the recent past, when you would ask people, you know, "What do you think of when you think of Louisville?" And this was my made-up answer, but the response would be something like, "Well, you know, it's kind of like Herschel's Bedford." "Well, what's Herschel's Bedford?" "Well, you know, it's kind of like Louisville." In other words, I don't know.
Yeah, right, there's nothing definitive.
Yeah, it's rooftops, it's retail and gee, I don't know, there's a lake out there somewhere.
Yeah, yeah, isn't that, isn't that that part of I-35 that's by the lake?
So I think we've got tremendous assets to, to market, but haven't really packaged that. So, and it's an important, it's, it's so important because it can attract visitors, it can attract people to move here, it can attract corporate moves, you know, it's, it's, it has so many spin-off benefits, so branding's on top of it.
Okay, and we say, and you saw some of that with what was, what has been accomplished and you heard from James and from Donna about the, the work that's going on in terms of the communications plan and so forth, but, you know, and anticipating the results of those, what's the first thing you do on branding?
What's the first thing?
What's your number one, first thing you tackle?
We need our own ringtone.
I thought it was going to be the Cam and Daryl Jeffrey.
It does sound kind of like that, yeah, yeah.
I think typically with branding, what, with the first thing that you have to tackle is what do we want that image, what do we want to, to put in that image and at the same time not dilute that brand to the point where it becomes meaningless? You have to be careful, you start plugging too many things into your brand and you become nothing, you become everything and nothing. So that would probably be the, the first concern. The other thing too is that it's not uncommon, I think, for companies who have different product lines, when you think about the city as a company with a lot of product lines, they'll create different segmented brands and that may be something that we also want to look at, that there's a brand image that is primarily used for visitors and a somewhat different brand image that's used for attracting recipients.
Couple possibilities there. Rudy, what do you?
I wrote down real estate deals.
Okay.
That comes after branding.
It would be like, it'd be, it'd be more like looking at zoning, to more dense property, high-rise condo, tapio, multi-story office buildings, which is the next step, what I see.
Okay, okay, and you'll hear some about some of that tomorrow as well when we talk about the, the southern, southern area.
That's all I have.
And Old Town.
And Old Town, yeah, exactly.
What I was looking mainly on having, is the office, office-type buildings, possibly some condo and, and hotel together.
Okay.
Which fits right into the like.
Yeah, yeah, so you, so we will, we will cover some, some more of that tomorrow, so that's, that's a, Rudy.
I think the east side, are they growing the way it is? And you can either choose to include Cassett Hills at that point or not, but reaching out and making sure that that east side is, is handled well, if those come this way, because everybody's going this way. The southern entry that I think we'll be talking about, I think is a really interesting idea and reworking that southern entry point with what we're trying to do there with Top Heights. At least the sketch I saw there had some really intriguing ideas and I think we could get a developer to go for that. And I think UNT, I think the opportunity that, I'd love to see them put in some space in the campus down there. I don't know, I don't know, that's just, I mean, they've got a southern outpost which is Lila.
Right, right.
But I think we could, I think they take that portal and I think we could really extend that opportunity for our residents. I'm not sure how it would have been best.
Well, and I have to tell you that in the, the meetings that we've been having with, with folks about Lila and the green centerpiece, that's our outpost or whatever.
And, you know, that's a dream, that's a dream, but as far as what can we do next year, really such that in?
Certainly, I would say, and Donna and others may want to add to that comment too, but they seem to be open.
I think they, they are very open to that. You know, what we've tried to do is to tie into them as, in, in as many ways as possible. I mean, one, we could have hired someone else to do our sustainability audit, we chose to use UNT for that reason. Again, to get as many tie-ins as we can to the university to get more of that presence here.
Yeah, and I think if you can get a bigger UNT presence, that might even tie into that incubator concept and, and some of the startup type business because you've got younger entrepreneurial, college-age folks that are trying to get something done.
And I've actually had that conversation with a couple of the UNT players and they actually mentioned our building and were asking some questions about what those plans ought to be for that.
And that ties into with the Old Town and the, the development and as you think about what's happening in Old Town, what's happening at the station, that whole sphere of activity is exactly the kind of thing that a lot of those entrepreneurial folks in the millennial generation are looking for. So that kind of connectivity and that kind of design and, you know, character that y'all created.
And UNT is also known certainly for the arts and so some conversations we've had also is to, to become more engaged with them in relation to the arts, you know, the students performing in the MCO brand, you know, a gallery actually hosting some shows from UNT. And so there's a lot of, a lot of different ways we can tie in with UNT.
Greg?
I think one of our biggest opportunities is that I think we need to jump out of some late development property. We've just been talking about it for years and years, I think the window is there and 2015 needs to get, and if we're not able to, we're not able to get it now, I'm scared that it's going to slip away. So I think that's a huge opportunity for us and that ties in along with your branding and that's obviously huge. The other thing that I wrote down is that we have, it's in the, it's in progress, it's happening, but I want to see it continue in 2015, that's a huge opportunity, is more residential development in Old Town. Similar to the projects that we have going now, I think there's plenty of opportunities to get more people living in Old Town. Y'all have heard me say that time and time again. We need that residential component in Old Town so we can get the restaurants, so there's a demand for a pharmacy and there's a demand for coffee shops and, but we need that residential component of living in here.
Okay, and again, that's something we'll get into more tomorrow with the discussions on Old Town, but, but that's a, that's a big dynamic that you, you've got an opportunity to move on this year as well.
One thing, your 2025 Plan stated as an action priority was a real estate analysis in Old Town and that's what we're going to be presenting to you tomorrow. So Trent has gone in and analyzed the real estate and what those potential uses could be and certainly some of that is exactly what you're saying, Greg, it's, it's the higher density.
Okay. What are your thoughts, Stuart?
Well, I think basically we have constantly tried to distinguish ourselves and building on what Rudy and Neil are talking about, branding and zoning and that sort of thing. I would like to see more of a different type of build going forward than the traditional that we have throughout the city. We can address that in, in our zoning and, and other requirements, sustainability and I think it would go a long way in what, in the branding issue as well, if we could put something forward that was a different design, especially primarily on the, on the gateways, you know, up and down the freeway perhaps as a starter.
Okay, so there's something that really says this is a different kind of community. When you're coming along, either when you're entering the city, there's something there that's very different, that's, that's distinctive. Are you also talking about different designs for new development?
Well, yes, well, I, I am, but, yes.
Yeah, okay.
But I, I suggested the gateways as the main focal point, but we can, you know, I don't want to use the word acquire, but request that, you know, and maybe through some incentive or whatever for them instead of doing the traditional house commercial structure, whatever, to give us a different look.
Okay, that's, that's great, that's.
I can't, Louis, what are you talking about, like, say the north gateway, have it more lake associated or nautical? That's, that's the theme we've had for the highway. So something like that.
You mean in, in a building?
I don't know how it could work it, but, but have something there.
Yeah, well, I think that's what I'm trying to say.
Right, so you're saying you have, you have buildings that, that really create a different identity, you might have some other aspects of that too, whether that's art, whether that's different kinds of, you know, signage.
And on the southern, what's our deal on the southern area?
Recreation.
Recreation.
So tying, so tying those in together, so. So when we're talking tomorrow about the southern gateway, let's, let's try to see if we can't make sure to focus on that question as part of that discussion so we can make sure that that gets incorporated in, in the designs that, that Nika and her folks are working on for that. And you mentioned sustainability as well and that, again, part of what we'll try to talk to you about tomorrow is some of the opportunities for sustainable building design, so, which could, both public and private. So we'll try to get, get to some of that as well.
Thanks, dear.
Mayor?
I have the same thing, basically, Greg did as far as the life. You can ask Nika what she first, when we first did a deal on this thing, developers told her that was the biggest wasted opportunity in any city in the metroplex. And you look at the cities around us, where the Great Vine, Roman Cloud, Alcoa, Garland, even Flower Mountain building their own.
Yeah.
They're just going to be able to come out because they don't have the water. Developers totally say it's the biggest wasted opportunity in any city in the metroplex. And we kind of got after it for a while, last few years, we ended up squatting. And if we don't, as Greg said, if we just continually squat, we're going to, and it's going to continue to be the biggest wasted opportunity that any city in the metroplex has. If you want a brand, you go build that, you'll have your brand, you won't have to create one, it will be your brand. And it's just, but you got to focus on it and you got to push it and you got to go get it and you got to do it. And don't put it on the back burner, say, "Well, we'll see what happens, we'll see what happens." Say, "No, I want it done, go do it, make it a profit." The other thing I think you're going to have is this kind of ancient, third question as well as the second, is the mall. We know the mall's going to go downhill, it's not in the 2025 plan, but it's getting ready. And it's going to be a big thing, so we're going to need to go out there and find something to do with that mall and make it, and I'm not saying it can happen, but just saying that the, that's going to be a long position. You got to think everybody heard, saw the article or it's looking at being taken over.
It's the longest thread on the city of Louisville page ever on Facebook, it's over 470 comments so far.
But it's not just that mall, I mean, I think there's, there's other malls that are that way, so we got to do something with that and I think we're going to have to go push that and find that.
And, you know, it's interesting because when we were doing the discussions on the 2025 and talking about that southern gateway, we talked about that issue about the mall and I, and I remember Karis Rutherford that was part of the team working with you all on that and he was talking about some of the things that the mall owner could do and that the mall owner had good knowledge and good experience on, but he, but there were also other things that said, you know, the city needs to be thinking about this and that and, you know, I know I've just actually finished working on a project for another community that's got a Sam's Club site that's about to be vacant and they're trying to look at that and the surrounding area to figure out, get ahead of it, what do we want to have? So those kinds of issues.
We've been kind of anticipating, talking about for years, the mall going to be coming to us, we need to be prepared to, to help and do something, have a plan.
But having come to us, that's, that's where it's going to be proactive.
That's the biggest challenge.
Who knows, it might be a developer in the wings waiting to snap it up as a deal.
Well, yeah, it's, it's prime property. When you look at what all's around it, it's prime property, something will happen. You know, there's an interesting, I think, interesting struggle going on out there. You're hearing of the big box of retail's not working anymore, even Walmart's looking at food and small, the neighborhood market's more not the big box, yet who just came to town, the biggest box there is, Nebraska Food and, and Windco, Windco is a big box.
Yeah.
Windco is not a small neighborhood, it's a big box.
Yeah.
So there's a struggle going on between that and it'll be interesting to see how it plays out, but I don't think Mr. Buffett's interested in it. We'll see how it works.
Well, there is a fine line between, you know, just letting, just letting the market take its course and see what the developer brings and what you can do to help versus being proactive and clear about, this is what the city is looking for, this is the kind of thing, this is the kind of character, this is how it's going to connect in. And I know Nika, in that whole southern identity gateway point, identity point, there's been a lot of thinking about that. So it may be that, Mayor, as you say, this is a year to step up the, you know, kind of be clearer or be more focused on what your, what your effort is.
And the fact that you've adopted an I-35 plan and a big part of it, if you remember, was redevelopment of the mall.
Yeah, right.
So there is some ideas out there floating and for the, the development community that has seen our plan, we have had some people, definitely some of the larger developers expressing interest in working to see how they can make that plan happen. So, so they're, we're moving towards that discussion for sure.
I do believe having those plans, those developed plans that are there, that we can share with the development community has made a tremendous, tremendous impact. That was one reason we were so supportive of moving forward with one for the southern identity, a more developed plan, because I think when that's out there and you're handing it to developers, we're getting responses, we're getting some pretty exciting responses right now.
That, that area down there, it does not have a, do you have a, do you have a? That, that area down there does not have a, do you have a tourism? Across the highway, it does.
On the east side, but not on the west side.
I mean, there's a lot of opportunity there, and when you look at the surrounding facilities around it, they're pretty strong. That property is prime, it's just have to find a new one.
Traffic's incredible, just the volume of
So often when a business opens up along thirty forty, what we hear is that's like their number one store, I think. Wasn't it Wendy's? It was their number one, not Wendy's, what's the store, the restaurant you like?
The one on
No, on thirty forty, fast food, I don't know. That was close, Mayor. Chick-fil-A, yeah, Chick-fil-A.
You mean the first one off on twenty one?
No, it, it, it was Chick-fil-A. It's one of their number one in the nation.
Flawed in this?
Sounds like.
Chick-fil-A, the Chick-fil-A on thirty forty says there's one of their number one stores in the nation. And it's because of the traffic volume that goes by there. And that's not gonna slow down, because you've got more growth out to the west, it keeps coming this way.
And you've got still that location on thirty five, people see you as you're coming those directions.
And creating those infill neighborhoods, what we just touched on, new neighborhoods. Basically, having a lot of residential around those, those retail areas would make those retail areas, areas really strengthen, really redo, redevelop, because then you have more people, right next to them, they're gonna come into that area, so.
Yeah, not only the new neighborhoods, but the thriving neighborhoods. The programs that you were talking about earlier would help to, help to make sure that there are people in those existing neighborhoods that are still there and are still a good one. Are there ideas about opportunities for twenty fifteen? We'll, we'll be getting into more detail on most of those things, I think, tomorrow. Certainly in terms of some of the real estate development, the southern, southern identity gateway. I, I think we've got the mall, the lake development on our notes, so we're here to get into more detail going forward. So we've got, got several of those, and I think that the branding will sort of flow through us, through several of those as well. Other ideas on the, so then, let's move to the last question. What issues are, might be in the future, might be things we should be paying attention to or thinking about, but they might not be showing up in twenty twenty five? Are there other, other things we need to keep, keep mind, be mindful of, and keep on our list, so to speak?
Three.
Okay.
But you beat me to the punch on the one, which is the mall.
The mall, okay.
Another one, and it was just hatched on in twenty twenty five, but never really rose up very high, is that there's gonna be an ongoing increasing demand for potable water, and the population will drive it, sprinkler systems, irrigation systems will drive it, and we're kind of, and you can speak more to this, we're kind of constrained on what we can really do to drive, you know, that supply, where, where that supply's gonna come from, how it's gonna be met, what happens if we are in a thirty year drought cycle? But I think you can't just sit and go, well, that's somebody else's problem, I'll just hope the faucet keeps running. The other one, it, it really didn't show up in twenty twenty five, and, and I'm starting to see some of this, and I broke down us and them, and the us and them is this side of the city versus the east side. And people who think that that's some other land, and I think vice versa.
Okay, great point.
And, and don't see, you know, things that happen there as Louisville and vice versa. So I worry about, about the us and them that's being built.
Okay, great. So Gina is, is tracking all of these items over here as far as these, the pieces that we need to be thinking about. When we talk about potable water demand, I don't know that we're gonna get into a lot of the supply side of that, but you are gonna hear about some of that demand side in terms of smart scape. Where you can reduce the use of water for irrigation, and we will be getting into a little of that tomorrow. And as, and as we talk about new neighborhood choices, you're gonna be, we'll be thinking about that, that east side versus the rest, us versus them.
There, I think even part of that, there's a little bit of an us and them either side of thirty five, but now it's like a whole new us and them.
And you've got that whole big open green pla, that whole space in the middle that either is, people are all gonna come together or it's really gonna separate, so, so that's a really important one. Who else? Leroy, what are your thoughts?
I would say, I would like to see us drive our economy more towards the business aspect, in particular, international business.
Uh huh, okay.
I would like to see us
Focus on international.
I would like to see us make some kind of connection to the international business world. Either through product, or employees trained, trained in those incubators, or whatever the case may be. I think that would go a long ways to build our tax base, the wages that the employees work for, producing skilled workers to meet those demands.
Okay, okay, very interesting. We'll put that down on the list. I don't know that we're gonna cover that in particular tomorrow, but that's a good one to, a good one to be thinking about. Certainly, certainly this region has a lot of strengths in that area, so, I, and, you know, you're not very far from DFW Airport.
Exactly. Transportation shouldn't be a big issue or problem.
Right, yeah, I mean, if you've got global train coming into DFW, it's, it's hard to be a whole lot closer than the location of where you're this community.
Now Nika wants a trip, she keeps staring at me.
Every year in China. So, China's cool.
Switzerland, thank you.
Go over there, bring, go over there, make that some news.
Thank you, Leroy.
Nina, have you seen that place on I thirty five in Dallas over by the American Airlines Center, where it's got the big sign that says an E D five project? Yeah.
Yeah, good point.
But there, there are communities that are, are working on that. Been a part of a team on a project in Richardson where they have what's called DFW Chinatown, which is a Chinese investor who has taken an old shopping center and is transforming that and bringing in art, bringing in business, bringing in all kinds of connections from China as part of that community, so.
Okay. Possible.
It's possible, yeah, for sure. And you guys are closer to the airport than they are. Who else has some other ideas? TJ, you got something to add?
Yeah, we talked about the mall.
Talked about the mall, right, right.
I, you know, I, I like that we're getting more development on that one twenty one corridor, but most of it is S U P. And you're going to have a lot of business getting pulled through that corridor, just because everybody's trying to get to the brass furniture market. So there's gonna be a lot of opportunity for a different type of development there, and I think we're gonna have to maybe put a plan or make sure we've got a good plan in place for that corridor, how it would build. And I also think that, you know, we, we tend to take our, our density. You know, and I'll be the first one to say it, most residents that I talk to, apartments, ah, horrible. And, you know, I, 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 I want my single family residences. The reality is, we have a huge chunk of apartments, they're part of Louisville, they keep my tax rates low. And I think we need to see, you know, as that continues to build out, I think we need to be a little bit more focused on what kind of impacts that's having on our police and fire. Are we getting accurate, equitable funding for those departments based on that utilization? You know, and how do we, how do we engage that part of our population? So it's kind of a bigger picture, it's just kind of a lot that sits out there, nobody wants to deal with it, I feel.
Yeah, 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 it's interesting, if you see the, the trends, and I know there was an article in the paper maybe two weeks ago about millennials wanting to rent instead of buy. And so increasingly, there are a lot of folks who could afford to buy, but they'd rather not. And so they're choosing to rent, so those, some of those dynamics are changing. Certainly, the characteristics and impact of urban apartments are quite different from the garden apartments. And so that's, there's a whole lot of issues there that are, are good ones.
So, yeah, that's, that's a small topic, but a huge bunch of stuff.
Yeah, and, and not that those people are necessarily more transient, but how can you engage them? Okay, Greg?
Can I, Greg, jump to that first?
Yeah, sure, yeah.
Sorry, Greg. Another thing that concerns me is that we have quite a few apartment complexes that are older and getting older, and we're not necessarily high quality construction when they're built. And they're gonna increasingly become an I S O R. And, you know, you ask what issues are not in twenty twenty five in the future, I think that's gonna become a problem.
The, the aging of the apartment stock, that wasn't, just wanted to break this card. Greg?
The mall, some of this.
The mall, okay.
Other thing I would say is, and this, I think, is gonna be dealt with as we move forward, but all the east side development that's taking place, and just making sure that we're planning ahead, and I think we'll be talking a lot about that tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Planning ahead with our services, and be ready for that development.
Good, okay, great. I'm glad, I'm glad that's one of the things that you're seeing as a priority, because I know the staff has put a lot of effort into trying to do some analysis to, to bring to you, and we'll be talking about that, and looking for direction for you tomorrow. Neil, you got some more?
I was gonna go back and, I don't wanna hammer this us and them thing into the floor, but
Brainy.
Right, no. So I'll talk about brain.
We can just write that down a little bit.
I was gonna make this point, and it occurred to me actually after I had said what I did, is that I grew up with that. I grew up in Dallas, I grew up in Oak Cliff, and my parents grew up in North Dallas. And what separates Oak Cliff from North Dallas, what is it? It's the Greenbelt and the Trinity River. It's exactly the same thing we have here. And it's a, it's a have and don't have as much, you know, across that line. And having lived on both sides of it, it was, it was always an us and them. And it's still today, an us and them. Well, that's another problem.
Except for Bishop, or whatever's on there.
So anyway, that's probably why, I, I look at this and I see parallels, many parallels.
But you, but you, you can, you've got an easier opportunity to make that change.
Okay, yeah, well, and Dallas never did well with it, never did well in managing it. And they, I think they really almost sometimes nurtured it, and that was a big mistake, so.
Rudy, what else do you think about?
I've got one subject with three or four parts to it. D C T A and the train system. While it's not directly, we're not directly involved, but they are big in our city. And first thing is, have some kind of express service. At one time, they were talking, I don't think about, all, going all the way like on Cotton Bowl weekends, going all the way to the Cotton Bowl, which we use the green line, and, and use the trains, that, they just stay on the D C T A train. The later hours, that's been an issue, for people going to basketball games, or taking classes at North Texas at T W. And the third thing is to work on expanding service with the, I think it's Kansas City Southern Track. The one that does, yeah, the one that's north of the sewage treatment plant and the city maintenance buildings out there. And that one would go all the way from U N T, by the football stadium out, where they're building out there, all the way to Gallatin Park in Richardson, Plano, on Central Expressway, south of the Rockville. And that would take that whole area, it's all owned by, I think it's owned by Dart now. And it's not gonna happen even by twenty twenty five, but it might be by twenty fifty. And have a train, and they, those two tracks cross, it crosses over the D C T A existing track at Mill and Cowan, probably where we closed Cowan, up there last few weeks, so.
Interesting, yeah. Really good idea.
And that would get the universities back into it all. And if you could get the Lila down, have the universities, because I believe all the students with their IDs ride the train, they, so they pay into the system already. So there's a market right there, coming back and forth. And every day, with traffic going between Denton and Louisville, there's more people on the train every day. Because they can't, you know, one day it's thirty minute trip, next day it's two.
It's unpredictable.
And then fill in the weather for the two. And the train, they're over your study. And, and the only problem, the problem in Denton is they have the train, it all comes to T W, and they're within a few hundred yards of the buildings there. And North Texas, they have to get on a bus, and it takes another, I don't know, twenty, thirty minutes, I think. Most of them are express buses, if they're correct.
Great, great point. Mayor?
Something that I just wanna have to deal with, but I'm afraid my conclusion here in the next few years is looking at him having to increase your tax rate. If you're gonna accomplish some of the things you want to, the lake, the mall, the amenities that you wanna do at some point, and we've had really good ride for a really long time, and being able to keep our tax rate decreasing and keep it really low, when you look at where it was fifteen years ago, where it is now, much lower. But at some point, you've got to look at, what are you sacrificing, or what are you giving up by not doing?
That's the opportunity cost of leaving a government.
And on that, it's never gonna be in twenty twenty five, I'm gonna tell you that.
Right. If we can get it into a bond program, so the voters would have to approve it before we did something like that. That's what we would need to have.
Exactly.
And that way, we're just doing what the voter, we didn't raise this, the voter president on itself.
And that's exactly what you gotta do, you gotta get the vote by, and the people by, and the people want it. You gotta address it.
Well, and that's something we'll have some conversation on. Introduce some of that subject on Saturday.
You will, and you, we'll have a number of your Leroy Bennett committee members that planned it to be Saturday meeting, and I will tell you they strongly support introducing that, and they understand that that tax rate's gonna have to go up to achieve the things that are outlined in twenty twenty five.
There's, there's certain things out there, I don't wanna reiterate this, but just like the, the new police technology thing that we're having do now, the price tag on that, that we just went over.
Four million?
Yes. That's not something you budget, and you have things like that. Oh, we've got a good reserve, Leroy, we did, we're good checks, we've got a good reserve. Those things, with technology, the way it's going now, we don't know what's gonna be like in twenty twenty five. There's gonna be things you gotta be prepared for.
Sure, yeah, that being prepared, being able to deal with it as it comes along is a big thing for a smart city. Anything else? Anything else that we forgot to put down on the list that we need to address? Any further reflections on accomplishments for last year? As I said earlier, and Donna said at the beginning of the meeting, we're trying to kind of concentrate tonight on what we've accomplished, how much has started, so that tomorrow, then we're gonna build on that with what are some of the issues coming next, what are the choices on some specific implementation things tomorrow? So, other comments on the accomplishments of, of the last year?
Just like the men's staff are jumping in, I'm feet. I'm excited to see that, and it's fun everywhere I go, I, I get great feedback from staff, so I hope it's not, they're just telling me what I think I wanna hear, but I don't believe so. It sure seems, it sure seems authentic. I've really, really had a good time.
At the R T C meetings, I don't know if you've had anything about it, but the cog, it's even talked about over there, for twenty twenty five. And I wasn't one of the biggest supporters of all this stuff, because it's almost like a touchy feeling.
We don't wanna do that.
Right, right, but, but I, I'm, it's been a few years now, or months anyway, and I'm getting a little bit more comfortable with it. But the people at the cog are talking about some of these things, and they like the fact that there's a plan out there. And even some of the other city officials that come up, and they talk about it too. So it's been talked about in the region anyway.
Yeah, that's the, the leadership, both in terms of your citizens, and in terms of you all as the council, and the staff really taking it on. Okay, well, I, as I said, I think it's, it's exciting, I, I, you know, it's very unusual for a city to have made this much progress, built up this much momentum in a short time, so I think you really should be very pleased and proud of that. We wanna wrap up this evening, after we've talked about a lot of stuff, because there is a lot of stuff that's been accomplished. But what we wanna end on tonight is a short video to show you, and maybe get even some more ideas, thinking about some even, you know, additional creative ways to, to move forward and think differently. So Gina, if you could put that slide on, the next, remember this slide. So what I'm gonna show you is a TED video, and are you all familiar with TED?
No.
I heard.
Okay, so, okay, so. So, so TED, TED is a, is a nonprofit international organization, it stands for Technology, Entertainment and Design, it's been, it got started in the mid-'80s, and their little headline is what you see over here, Ideas Worth Spreading, and so what they try to do is they feature really short, very engaging videos from interesting people doing interesting things around the world, and so the one we want to show you tonight is one about New York's streets, and Jeanette Sadiq Khan, who is the person you'll hear speaking, was the transportation director for Mayor Michael Bloomberg, and so she was in charge of the mean streets of New York, and I think Donna mentioned earlier, you know, that if you think about traffic congestion, and you think about issues between people and cars and all the rest of it, New York is, is a place where you really, you know, where all of that comes together at a magnified level. So what I want you to do is just watch this, I think you will find it interesting and entertaining, but also creative, and one of the things that I, I hope you might take from it that will inspire you as we get into our, our detailed discussions tomorrow is what are some of the ways to try things out and think outside the box and come up with some good results? So with that, I'm going to get out of the way of this one, and Eric, are you the master of mine? Okay. So you all might not have quite exactly the, the traffic volume issues that they have in Times Square, but what I, what I find appealing about that is just the notion of get out, try something different, think about things differently, and see how it really works with the community. So what, what did, what did you all think? What was, what, what occurred to you as you watched that?
I'll think about Mill Street.
Okay.
Think about closing Main Street, but all the retailers would have fit, but I'd just love to close Main Street in the middle of the town, and just make it the best good space.
Perfect garage.
Underground.
It would solid.
Yep, it would.
Okay, so as we think about the ideas and the, the issues that we are going to talk about tomorrow and on Saturday, keep in mind, what are the ways to think differently about the assets that are hidden in plain sight? What are the ways to think differently about the infrastructure, the things that you already have, the things that are moving forward with your 2025 vision, and let's see how we can, can keep that momentum going on each one of those topics. So with that, I think we are adjourned for the evening. Donna, unless Donna, is there anything else?
No.
Mayor?
Focus out.
That's about you, Greg, we're done.
Right, we are, we are meeting in the morning.